Welcome to the County Council meeting for Cecil County on April ninth, twenty thirteen. It's nine a.m. We're going to call meeting order. I'd like to have a motion to amend our agenda. If you have in front of you an agenda that we begin. Congressman Harris has been notified that this will be about fifteen minutes late, so I'd like to open the meeting with our open session. I'd like to have a motion to amend it and then start the open session.
I move we amend the agenda to begin with the open session.
Your second? Second. Okay, we have discussion. Through the discussion, all those in favor, say aye. After Congressman Harris arrives, we will go back to our scheduled schedule. So the first thing on our open agenda today is approval of the minutes for the county's work session meeting on April second. Is there any amendments or modifications to that meeting minutes? Here and now may I have a motion to approve? I'm in. I'm in.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the council work session meeting minutes for April second, twenty thirteen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. The second item on our agenda is approval of meeting minutes for our council closed session on April second. Are there any amendments or changes to those meeting minutes? I have a motion to approve the council closed session meeting for April second.
I move to approve the council closed session for April second.
Your second? Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve our council closed session meeting minutes for April second, twenty thirteen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is a support letter. Mary Ann Lasanti from the Lower Susquehanna Heritage Greenway has requested the county council write a letter to support her grant applications. We've been provided a copy of the list of projects that she's applied for grants. Is there any discussion about this request?
I would just move that we include the amounts on the website of the agenda, just the link to show the amounts that went to each organization.
I'm sorry I wasn't speaking into the mic, but okay, these are grant applications. These are not expenditures. This is a request for money from different entities, so I don't have a problem putting a copy of the letter with the request on our website. But these are not expenditures. This is what she's requesting from different groups to use to support her effort.
And is there any opportunity for those amounts to be shared after they've been approved?
If she gets the grants. Right. She's not sure that she'll receive any or all of the grants.
No, I understand. It's the complete letter, the complete request that she's sending down to be approved are the applications with certain amounts. Is there any problem in disclosing those amounts?
I don't think so.
Okay, well, I would just request that we include that. I mean, if there was a problem, I'd be willing to amend that request, but I don't see where it would...
Where is Jim Massey? Oh. I'm in.
I'm here.
Okay. Have you seen the amounts?
I have seen the amounts.
All right. Is there a motion to approve this request?
Is that... The motion is to approve the request for the letter of support, including an amendment to our agenda to list the amounts to disclose to the public of what is being applied for.
Your second? Second. Okay, there's a motion to approve the request for support letter. In addition, the amount of the application request will be posted on our website. Can we manage that, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve the letter of support. Is there any further discussion?
I just have one question. Are we singling out the Susquehanna Greenways, or are we going to be doing the amounts for all applications?
I just thought it was a good opportunity for other museums, other entities that are qualified to apply with Lower Susquehanna Heritage Greenway, to get an idea of the funding that's available for projects.
Okay.
Let's make it clear that this funding may or may not be available. These are only grant applications. Whether she'll receive any of this money is not clear at this time. But she's asking for our support so that we can watch her get better. The probabilities of her receiving is approved by the support of the council. Okay, there's been a... Okay, we... Can we go over?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve a support letter with the understanding that the amounts of the grant applications would be provided on our county website. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the council management report. Mr. Massey, do you have to report for us today?
Yes, yes, I do. I wanted to make the council members aware that on April thirtieth, we originally had postponed the budget hearing for Department of Public Works to discuss part of their capital budget, but due to some staff scheduling, we had moved DPW to speak on all their budgets for this afternoon's session, so they will be covering the operating and capital budget as well as discussion of the rates and fees. Thereupon, we have asked the Citizens Budget Advisory Board if they would like to come to our work session on April thirtieth to give us their recommendations for the budget, so that we have not heard from them, but that request has been made, so we would schedule that on your calendar. The administration has asked to make a presentation briefing on April sixteenth at our work session regarding the Northeast River Advanced Wastewater Treatment Plant, ENR, and capital project, so Mr. Flanagan will be with us on the sixteenth. The Board of Education has sent a budget transfer request for their current FY two thousand thirteen budget, which we will put as a business item on April sixteen, and we've asked the Board of Education to come to our work session to give us explanation a little more details than their request. The college quarterly update will be held Tuesday, April thirtieth, at three thirty at the end of their workshop. And that's all I have to report.
On the first item regarding the reporting by the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee, if you notice on your schedule, April twenty third is the last date where any department or organization is presenting to the council, so it'll give a week to the Citizens Budget Advisory Council to come up with some suggestions for the council. And then we will go in to make seven. It will be a public hearing, and hopefully some of those recommendations made by the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee or council can be known to the public at the time of the public hearing, and they'll be able to weigh in on some of those recommendations as well as any general public comment that the citizens have about the proposed executive budget. Okay, thank you, Mr. Massey. Are there any council member items? Mr. Don, go ahead, Scott.
I'll be smart. Thank you. Got your number, don.
The next drug awareness workshop will be on community policing, April eleventh, six thirty p.m. at Cecil College. In the Technology Building, room two oh eight, Sheriff Bain of Parker County will review community policing programs that have worked effectively in Parker County, and Sheriff Jamie will review programs that are currently in Cecil County. We'll also discuss how HIDA will assist the county in fighting drug trafficking and discuss new programs he would like to promote. The Keep Cecil Beautiful, this organization, held a cleanup event on Sunday. Just want to say thank you to Roger Lamb and Ken Salmon for all of their continued efforts. Thirty-five bags of trash were collected, and it was... They were picked up by the Roads Department. Really appreciate that support. For the next cleanup event, you can visit the Facebook page at Keep Cecil Beautiful. On Saturday, I attended the Rising Sun Fire Department banquet awards. One of the most touching tributes and awards went to Carl Rottepack, who was honored with the Chief Emeritus, status for his hours of service, leadership, and dedication. Other than that, I did want to update that House Bill ten ninety-eight did pass with amendments, and it has a threshold of five hundred thousand before the provision for prevailing wage, for the prevailing wage to kick in. Okay.
For the public's information, if you could give us a synopsis of what that bill was.
The bill requires all public works projects of five hundred thousand or more that are funded in whole or in part of state money to pay a prevailing wage. Structures built by private nonprofit institutions in higher education, regardless of their funding sources, are exempt from this requirement.
And you said that it only kicks in after a half million dollars?
Yes.
Projects less than a half million dollars are not included in this bill?
include, right.
Is that it?
To double the share. I just wanted to update the public. I would encourage anyone who's watching the Conway La Dam issue with the sediment being addressed, that you register with the... With FERC and our representative, the Clean Chesapeake Coalition, Chip McCloud, has filed a response to Exaline's request for an extension on their report that's required at the end of March. So Chip McCloud is here, and I hope he addresses our concerns. He'll be able to give a... I'm sorry. We'll be able to address Congressman Harris our concerns with the dam. That's it.
Okay. Councilmember Brock, do you have any comments?
President D.A. attended awards banquet at Cecil Firehouse on Saturday night.
Councilwoman Bolesby?
Very quickly, we hosted Cecil Leadership here last Wednesday. It was a great morning. We always enjoy that group. Also attended the Business Expo on Thursday. Also attended the Local Management Board from the Human Services Agency meeting yesterday. We'll be going to the Commission on Aging meeting tomorrow, as well as the Employee Recognition luncheon, and the Northeastern Nonprofit Resource Center opening house. That's it.
Thank you.
President Hodges, can I... I forgot to mention something.
Go ahead.
I had also attended the Economic Development Commission meeting. Anibon Basu was the speaker, and he gave a report, a review of the report he provided to the Susquehanna Workforce Network on the jobs situation in our county. And I would encourage everyone, if they can, to please come to the BPAC presentation. It will be a more lengthy synopsis of his study. It'll be April twenty-third here at eight a.m.
Okay, you still might under because I was going to remind everyone, but that's okay. Thank you for being up. April twenty-third, our meeting may be delayed slightly because BPAC will be meeting in this room at eight o'clock. The primary purpose of the BPAC meeting is for Mr. Basu to make his presentation. Did you find that the information presented was enlightening and important to the success of Cecil County?
We have to keep our fingers on the pulse of where the jobs are coming from, what opportunities are had, and just continue to work in that direction. There is a lot of opportunities, especially with federal jobs. And he had also mentioned where the job demand met with the community.
Right. So I invite the public and all those people that watch the council members to come before the BPAC meeting at eight o'clock. We'll run over into our meeting. Our meeting will start as soon as his presentation will be completed. On Saturday, I did go to a parliamentary teacher seminar and spent the entire day, even though I would rather have been walking or doing something outside, but at the end of the day, I feel that every time I go, I learn something, and I would like to talk through the council members about a few minor changes in how we move forward with our agendas and voting. Nothing dramatic, but I think it will simplify things and make things more efficient. I also attended with Councilwoman Romell the award banquet for the Rising Sun Fire Company, and it just is to show how many people in our community are willing to volunteer and work hard every day to support Cecil County and its citizens. I know that there's lots of fire companies doing the same thing as Rising Sun. I would put it in two seasons to me because you can't clean two places at once, but we have a large group of public, private citizens, private citizens, doing great things for Cecil County every day. Mr. Harris, would you like to come forward and sit down with us here?
Director of Administration, Admiral, welcome to the introduction.
Good morning, everyone. Anyone attending a recent council meeting, I think, will be familiar with the three topics that we'll be discussing this morning. Sediment behind Conway La Dam and the relationship of that sediment on the pollution diet or TNPL from Chesapeake Bay, groundwater issues related to the Pierce Creek Army Corps of Engineers dredge material containment facility, and drug use in Cecil County makes notably a prescription of drug use. On behalf of everyone here this morning, I thank Congressman Harris for the opportunity to expand and extend this discussion to the federal level. This morning, Council President Hodges will start out with a leading discussion on the TNPL Watershed Implementation Plan discussion and sediment behind the dam. County Executive Moore will follow with a description of the Pierce Creek dredge material placement facility groundwater issue, and Councilwoman Romell will lead the discussion relating to the drug use and particularly the prescription drug use issue in Cecil County. We had some informational resources with us this morning that I'd like to introduce. Behind me, Department of Public Works Director Scott Flanagan, Cordell Welland, Chief of Development Services Public Works, Eric Sestrop, Director of Planning and Zoning. We also have our County Health Officer Stephanie Garrity, Fred Von Stodden, Environmental Health, elected town official Mayor David Fisano, Town Belton, Gene Benner, Town Planner, Rod Hines, Town Administrator Port Deposit. I'd also like to recognize Dick Sossi, Community Liaison for Congressman Harris, and also Chip McCloud, Clean Coalition Funkel Moltke. Also out in the audience hiding is Lisa Webb, our Director of Technological Development, Craig Wafer, Budget Manager, and way in the back, Jason Allison, the County Attorney here with us today. And I'm sorry, Mayor Fisher, Town of Risen Sun. So with that alternative to Council President Hodges to start the discussion this morning.
Congressman Harris, thank you for coming to work with us on some of the issues that are facing Cecil County. Before I get started, I'd like to introduce Mr. Massey, James Massey, next to Scott Flanagan in the back corner. Mr. Massey is the county manager and helps the council members... Excuse me, council manager. Council manager helps us keep our act together and keeps us organized and moving forward. In any event, as you're aware, President Obama signed an executive order several years ago requiring all states in the Chesapeake Bay Watershed to come up with a plan and implement a plan to clean up the Chesapeake Bay. As you're also aware, Maryland has taken that seriously and has required the counties to put a whip plan together, Watershed Implementation Plan together, to support the state's efforts to implement that executive order. I assume that you're also aware that other states in the watershed have taken their instructions not as seriously and/or not at the same pace as our governor has. But in any event, under a very compressed timeline, Governor Malley has asked the counties to move forward with implementing a plan. One of our fears is the amount of sediment that's been trapped over the past eighty years behind the Conway La Dam, and we have evidence and we have pictures. And I'd like Rodney Hines really briefly to explain to you what he found on his second or third day on the job with deposit after, I think it was the storm leak, not even the hurricane, it was just a major water event. Could you explain to Mr... Excuse me, Congressman Harris, on what you saw after the waters were received in Port Deposit?
We had considerable amount of mud. Can you just get into the microphone? We had a considerable amount of mud and sediment that came into the town. If you notice this picture, if you were coming in, this is Conway La Dam. This was at the height of the storm, forty-two gauge rope, and there were five million gallons of water per second coming down that dam. It was projected really to go to seven million. And, you know, Port Deposit's fairly low. We got considerable water. It'd be pretty hard to quantify how much silt and mud came in, but the mud and silt that came in is only part of the problem. It's what do you do with the sediment once it gets there? Because Maryland Department of Environment is very conscious of putting anything back that's going to go back into the river. So we were between a rock and a hard place. They did work with us, but we get a lot of dirt and sediment anytime there's a flood.
Thank you. It wasn't only the water damage that caused extreme property damage in Port Deposit, but there was a tremendous amount of silt and sediment that was left over when the water received. In some cases, it was up to six inches in some places.
Four feet.
Four... Sediment?
Oh, sediment, yeah. Six inches of sediment.
Four feet of water, six inches of sediment.
Yes.
And required skid loaders and more than shovels, bricks, brooms to clean it up.
We thought we would never get it all out, to be true, but keep doing it, you get it done.
So if in a storm event, Port Deposit receives that much sediment, can you imagine how much sediment would end up in the dam? And our concern is that we spend projected six million dollars for our whip plan.
Six hundred?
Six hundred, I'm sorry. Six hundred million. And I know that the town has done some projections, and they'll speak to you about that in a minute, but their efforts are going to require millions of dollars in addition. Our concern is that if we do nothing about the dam, but do our part and find out that the dam will wash away all our efforts as far as sediment. And I guess we are looking for some advice and assistance and some efforts from the federal government to maybe take the lead, maybe do provide some resources, some funding. But quite frankly, in my mind, this needs to be synchronized with our whip plan efforts. Now, Mr. Mayor Fisano, would you like to speak to the congressman about what you found out of the whip plan?
The biggest thing is going to be the cost. You know, you just mentioned for the county, and our price tag is projected to be twenty-four million. And I just don't know how a town of our size, even the smaller towns, can afford to do all this cleanup and stuff that we've got to do. We have to implement costs for all the towns, it's just really too much, and we just can't do it. That came over a period of time, and it created a real burden on us and the citizens as well.
It appears to us that there's slightly different environmental standards by the states because the EPA has said that states, you know, manage it on their own. And without that synchronization that I spoke about, you know, Maryland can do more than their fair share and end up being forgotten. And I guess our concern is, we certainly don't want to throw the hammer at the consequences of the other states, but we also would like the EPA to let Maryland know that the consequences of not taking immediate action may not be so great until other states are on board as well as ours. We have been, and I'll let the executives speak to you about what's in our budget for this year to begin implementation of our leadership plan. I think that she has found that we need to start, and Executive Moore, would you like to explain what the plans are for this year?
Certainly. President Hodges mentioned the price tag of six hundred million dollars for Cecil County. In addition to that, Mayor Fisano talked about a twenty-five million dollar price tag for the Town Belton in addition to that. And on a federal level, six hundred million may not sound like a lot of money, but we divided that out per household, and it ended up being two thousand dollars more per year per household in Cecil County, in addition to the taxes that they're already paying. And from a business perspective, you know, every business person wants to get the biggest return on investment that they can. And as we look at the map, especially the one on the right-hand side, which was the bay, you can see the Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and then the dividing borders of Cecil County and the state of Maryland. And you can see where the Susquehanna River is right below the tidal Pennsylvania and what was coming down there, and as soon as it hit, it would be the upper end of the Chesapeake Bay around Turkey Point, you can see the dark brown flow, and as it continues to go down the bay. And that wasn't hurricane, it was just simply a problem of storm. But I think it gives a good indication of the kind of sediment that can happen with a major storm event. And we look at everybody... Everybody wants to clean the bay. Certainly, that's part of the legacy of Maryland. Certainly, there's been hundreds of years of abuse to the bay, and we know that. But when we look at that, and we are permitted to help doing our part to clean up the bay, and we look at that versus the price tag associated with that, and wonder, are we really getting the biggest bang for our buck? If Maryland is... Has higher standards in terms of what we can put into the water, yet we can do nothing about the states north of us. That's where we need help from our federal elected officials and an overall effort to work with the states north of us, not only to be consistent regulations, but looking at the sediment behind the dam, knowing that that is nothing. And that comes from Maryland, but actually that comes from states north of us, and how to deal with that.
Another concern that we have is, in order to determine our Watershed Implementation Plan, there were certain parameters that we had to meet that were basically a computer system, what they call a bay model software program, that I'm not sure who developed it and where it's coming from exactly and how they... It kind of reminds me of the Wizard of Oz, where you have somebody behind the curtain telling you that you have to do things. But we have serious concerns about the science behind the bay model. There's been a lot of questions raised about the impact of sediment systems. There's been other questions raised about the accuracy of the bay model in general. And it would certainly be helpful if somebody would come out from behind the curtain and try to explain the bay model to us better and prove to us the science behind bay models so that we are not tilted windmills here, that we want to make sure that the money that we spend, the taxpayer dollars that we spend, whether it's the town, or the county, or anyone, that we're going to end up with a clean bay. And as Executive Moore said, if nobody wants to fight the effort to not clean up the bay, we want a clean bay, it's in everyone's best interest to have a clean bay. But we want to do it in a very effective, productive manner without wasting dollars. So we just wanted to bring this matter to your attention, and if there's anything that you can do to help us spend our tax dollars wisely and end up with a clean bay, we'd like to have your advice and whatever we can do to help you at federal level to all work together with this issue.
Sure. Let me just comment briefly, you know, we've been, tried to stay in front of the Conaway Lake Dam issue pretty clearly, you know, as you all know, when you review the data, it's clear that within, and the estimates, I believe, in the ten-year range, ten by twenty years, basically every bit of sediment that flows down from Pennsylvania is going to flow over that dam. So that you won't need a major storm to wash out what's behind the dam, you'll just have constant flow of these sediments, and of course, the bound phosphate. So you have, you'll have a huge potential pollution problem coming online, a constant pollution problem coming online in ten years. And with regards to modeling, you know, you're absolutely right, you know, it's unclear whether, when you have constant flow over the dam, whether that's going to change the situation from what you have now, which are periodic releases after large storms. Nobody really understands what the science is. You know, we have met with the EPA folks and with Department of Agriculture, so you know, they have different models, they've come to different conclusions, but in the same, you know, federal governments have two agencies that basically don't agree with each other on modeling, and yet they're, you know, the regulations have proceeded forward that are going to result in fairly dramatic economic effects on local jurisdictions. I mean, these sums of money are mind-boggling, especially in the midst of a recession, when everything, you know, the cost of everything goes up, I mean, taxes and fees are raised at the state level. You can't, you can't expect the citizens to pay for all of this without clear science. And I think the point we should say upfront, look, everybody wants a clean bay, but we have to get there in a way that will dependively get us there without breaking the bank. And I don't think the current WHIP plan implementation framework does that, to be honest with you. So at the federal level, we're going to do a couple of things. First of all, we've met with the U.S. Geological Survey, and we're going to, we're going to ask them to, at some level, to update that projection on when the dam filled, which of course, the last dam of the three, the other two already filled further north. So the last line of, I'll say, last line of defense to the bay is there. We've talked with some of the Chairman of the Committees of Jurisdiction, you know, I'm no longer on the Transportation Plan or the Appropriations Committee, so we don't have jurisdiction, direct authorization jurisdiction. We of course have appropriation jurisdiction over all these agencies. But with the idea of coming up, of someone coming up with a plan, what to do about Conaway Lake, I mean, everyone knows the plan, everybody, you know, this is, you know, it's, and the analogy I draw is, you know, the problem with Medicare and Social Security. We knew sixty-five years ago, when people were being born, that they were going to, you know, they were going to be, there was going to be an issue in the 2030s, because all these folks were going to retire, like myself, and be on, required those federal programs. Similarly, we've known now for about ten years that the Conaway Lake Dam has a limited lifetime with regards to sediment storage behind the dam, and yet, no one's come up with a plan what to do about it, which is frustrating, because as you know, if you look at the magnitude of that sediment problem, it's huge, and it will require either a lengthy environmental process, if you're going to use land disposal, if you're going to do other kinds of disposal. I mean, just getting the process going is going to take years and years. And if we don't start doing something now, we will find that we will reach the point where we're just going to get sediment flow over that dam. And you're right, no matter what the counties in Maryland do, you know, we're going to be overwhelmed by sediment that comes down, as you know, most of the sediment comes from north of Maryland. We're going to be overwhelmed by that sediment. So what I'm doing is trying to urge the federal agencies to come up with a plan for the Conaway Lake Dam, and everybody seems to point fingers at everybody else. You know, we've spoken with Exelon about it, obviously, they need a relicensing to go on, so hopefully, that may bring all of that to a head, and again, force someone to come up with a plan of what are we going to do with the sediment behind the Conaway Lake Dam? But right now, there's really no viable solution on the table, and in the absence of that, I share your fear that Maryland will be asked to do even more, once that sediment starts flowing over the dam. And the cost of doing even more is, again, it's a, it's a large cost, that I don't think can be borne by local governments, and I don't think the federal government's going to step in with funding for this mandate. So again, philosophically, I'd rather we just lessen or delay the mandate, rather than continue with a, with a large unfunded mandate, which is what the EPA plan is turned into.
Congressman Harris, just so you know, too, we have, Cecil County is part of our project for Act fourteen. We are implementing a few things, about two programs, about three hundred thousand each, that will go toward our part in fiscal fourteen and complying with our watershed implementation plan.
Councilwoman Brownell.
I'm the representative to the Clean Chesapeake Coalition, and it's apparent that if we don't address the sediment behind the dam, it's going to be a disaster. All this money that will be invested in the WHIP plans are not going to have any effect on that water. And our best line of defense is to involve ourselves in the first relicensing process. This has to be addressed before they get their relicensing. Excellent. And I'd like to ask if Chip McLeod, if there's anything substantially important, briefly, that you would like to share with Mr. Harris, Congressman Harris?
No, I would, thank you very much.
Speak into the microphone, please.
My pleasure.
You wrote more on this side, too.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Chip McLeod. We represent the Clean Chesapeake Coalition. Congressman, just for your benefit, that organization is currently comprised of seven Maryland counties, four of which are on eastern shore, Cecil, Caroline, Kent, and Dorchester. Just to echo a few things said, the issue about a plan, the need for a plan to do something about these sediments that are above the Conaway Lake, the concern of the coalition is this: Currently, no organization, entity, government is responsible for doing anything. So while there are plans, nobody's responsible for implementing, including Exelon, which is why the relicensing process that's underway is so important. The dam was last relicensed in nineteen eighty, they're looking for a forty-plus-year license now, and really, the only opportunity for anybody that cares about saving the Chesapeake Bay is focused on that process and finding some responsible party to have a plan, not only having a plan, but to actually implement it. Another aspect of the federal government that I think is very important about what's going on and what that picture reflects, is how much money is being spent below the dam, as opposed to above the dam. And if you just look at dredging, and the dredging of all the shipping channels in Chesapeake Bay that is done to keep the port of Alden River viable, probably a billion dollars has been spent in the past ten years dredging the upper parts of the Chesapeake Bay to keep the port viable. About a billion dollars or less is going to be spent in the next ten years doing the same activity. Eighty percent of the sediment that the Port Administration is picking up off the bay model is coming from the Cecil Hannah River. It's not run off from the banks of the Tascow, it's coming down the Cecil Hannah. So we are on this fool's air, you know, of tracking, I mean, what's cheaper, to grab all those sediments when they get down to the dam like that, or grab them above the dam? So whatever the plan's going to be, we hope folks at the federal level are looking at how much money the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has spent below the dam, and how, zero. As far as we know, all the research we've done, not a dime's been spent in eighty-four years trying to do anything about the sediments above the dam. And then when you look at what Maryland taxpayers are spending to try to do their best to clean the bay, washed away, wasted. I mean, the state's watershed implementation plan has a fourteen and a half billion dollar price tag. The Coalition counties say, how much of that is going to be wasted? Even if we had the money, which we don't, a local government's can't afford this, even if they could, much of it's wasted. I mean, you can't look at that picture and seriously discuss the impact of a Chesapeake Bay on the banks of the Albert River, and wonder whether that matters more than what's happening in that. So I don't want to, I know we're preaching to the choir in a way, but the one issue for the federal officials we really hope you focus on is how much money is being spent below the dam by the federal government when it really needs to be directed above the dam, before it gets open? And we're just chasing it all over the place. So, and I think this, read your one quote, this is speaking of dredging, this is from what's called the dredging link, this is put out by the Maryland Port Administration, and this is their January, February, two thousand and twelve issue. It just says, "The dredge material included that they had to dredge," this was back in two thousand and twelve, "approximately a million cubic yards deposited in the channel as a result of the August storm last year in two thousand and twelve, that flushed a lot of sediment out from behind the dams on the lower Cecil Hannah River. The maintenance job cost twenty-five point six million dollars." So last August, the Port Administration spent twenty-five million dollars dredging just because of that single storm event. And it's not major storms anymore, but the people that understand what's happening with the bay will say, every spring, when the thaw occurs, we get sediment flowing in. So it used to be, and we're basically at, the coalition believes that the upper Chesapeake Bay is in the same condition it was right after Hurricane Alice. And everybody understands that dam was at Hurricane Alice's, did at the Chesapeake Bay, and it's never recovered since then. We think we're pretty much at that same place right now, because of how full those reservoirs are.
Chip, you've actually provided a perfect segue into the next topic.
Pierce's brief.
Pierce's brief, right.
Yeah, and let me just move off of that. I will go back to the Army Corps and ask them that, because we meet with the Army Corps regularly, is whether they have, you know, how they go about thinking about spending the money above the dam rather than below the dam, but the trouble is with placement above the dam, that's the problem. I mean, you know, it is, unless you, unless you have land placement, it's going to be much more expensive than the placement that they can do below the dam. But that being said, you know, that's something they should be looking into.
And no question, and you know, the ironic thing about placement, again, focusing on this picture, open water dumping is illegal in the Chesapeake Bay. In other words, before the artificial islands, you know, Site One or Four, that whole debate was about open water dumping in the channels, and everybody said, no, no, that's bad for the bay. Open water dumping is bad for the bay, but that's open water dumping to the extreme. Now let that continue to occur, and then we go about and spend all this extra money building our popular island, popular island, now this controversy over dredge foils, placement is an issue. But that doesn't, I mean, we still got to figure out this.
Thank you.
I'd like to make one last comment for myself, and that is that Congress has been pushing into considering the extension of the waterways over the US, in my opinion.
The Water Act, right?
Yes, exactly. And extending their jurisdiction over the waters of US into private property, into channels and ditches and gullies and all kinds of other things. I would hope that before they start taking on the responsibility of regulating all these other waterways, that they take more responsibility for something like the Cecil Hannah that needs attention now, needs resources, needs money, and all kinds of effort to clean up. So before they start fighting off more, how about doing a good job of what they are responsible for today?
Mr. President, one last thing. I just wanted to also point out that there's a huge disparity with the state and the federal government and the regulations and mandates and policies that they're imposing on the local jurisdictions, and the hypocrisy of them not doing their fair share, in fact, being the key players and having the biggest impact to solving the problem. I just wanted to point that out. And I would encourage you to, you know, after you speak with the Army Corps of Engineers, we've noticed there is a, sometimes, a lack of transparency and inconsistency with the information that comes out. Please contact Mr. McLeod to get another side of the story, he's well worth the investment that the counties have put into, into this panel of Clean Chesapeake Coalition to represent us and to fight on our behalf. Thank you.
Congressman Hodge, if I may, just make one more comment to the Congressman, just so he, you know, we appreciate the efforts of the federal government. One thing I wanted to make clear, too, is our issue, really, we realize that the counties we represent is with the state of Maryland, that has chosen to aggressively implement the Chesapeake Bay TMDL while others think it's flawed. And that's really our, I think, the frustration of local officials, is we look around at all the other bay states who have legitimate questions about what EPA is doing, legitimate questions about the model. I mean, the model is plainly flawed, just the way it characterizes what's going on at Conaway Lake. I mean, the EPA TMDL says, business as usual when it comes to Conaway Lake, when in August last year, the USGS, the Geological Survey, said those reservoirs are full. So right there, we think that TMDL is flawed. Our frustration is our own state has decided to aggressively implement it regardless. I mean, when the model first came out of TMDL, Maryland said, not only are we going to do it, we're going to do it faster than anybody. And here we are today, as you mentioned, in a sluggish economy, local government's struggling to new maintenance of effort and whatever, and then we have this unaffordable price tag of, you know, saving the Chesapeake Bay. So we think at the federal level, there's real help to help us work through this. We have our own challenges dealing with our own state government and getting to the city that they're making a smarter way to accomplish this, because the agenda that's laid out is just, we don't think it's going to accomplish much, and it's very unfortunate.
Sure, I know, I share your frustration, you know, I can't do anything at the state level, but that being said, I'm continually concerned about policies being initiated in Annapolis that place us at competitive disadvantage to our surrounding jurisdictions. And look, in this economy, you can't afford to be at a competitive disadvantage, whether it's a, you know, higher tax on gasoline, or whether it's a, you know, watershed implementation plan implementation schedule that is five years ahead of your competitors, costing your jurisdictions and your taxpayers' money. I share that concern.
Thank you. Executive Moore, would you like to move on to the next subject?
All, please, Congressman Hodge, all these comments are an excellent segue into this next topic. And rapidly, we've spent time, a lot of time on an update, Pierce's brief, because I know Mr. Saucy has been attending meetings and has been keeping you updated. Just very quickly, the county is working with the Corps of Engineers with an outreach program to the residents in that area. We've sent out certified letters, asked them to have their wells tested, we're working very closely with those residents in getting a plan, so that the Army Corps of Engineers will know exactly what mitigation needs to happen to stem the contamination. Two things I think that we would, just like you need to be aware of, that we are hoping that the Corps will continue to do, is that they have, they've opened up a communication, and they're better about that, we appreciate that, we want to keep that communication open, because with those residents down there, it's critical that they know what's going on, and how the Corps is going to mitigate those problems, not just now, but to make sure that, you know, three, five, ten years down the road, the same thing isn't going to happen. So there are the Corps' meetings with the town of Cecilton this week to talk about tapping them perhaps to their water sources, so there's options being discussed, you know, I want to make sure that you do that. But all of these things, and we're, and oh, by the way, very committed to making sure that those folks are taking care of them down there. But what this brings up is, I think, a bigger topic, and we've had quite a bit of discussion about the sediment. This sediment, this is a part of a much larger problem. The dredging that needs to be placed, just because of sediment coming in and because of the storms that we have, the bay has to be dredged, and there continues to be a continuing question, as we've all discovered, as we've been going down this path, of where do you put the foils? Where do you dredge? And I asked the Corps of Engineers a couple of months ago, in a meeting, to ask them what their philosophy was. I said, you know, wouldn't it be cheaper to dredge above the Conaway Lake Dam as opposed to doing it every year below the dam? They said, well, that's not really our decision. But because of the costs associated with that, and because everyone wants to facilitate that work, we'd like facilitate that, that work, uh, we'd like it to be part of the solution to this, and we would like to be part of the solution to this, as we've had our discussions. Um, it, it appears that an overall master plan for, for dredging, uh, on a federal level needs to be developed. Uh, we would be glad to share whatever resources we have at the local level to help the federal government understand and to be able to, you know, perhaps, uh, for now, in some areas that are specific. But Cecil County does not want to be a, a dumping ground. And our, our fear is that Pierce Creek is a good example of, because there's no other place to take it, and they own the land, they can't, they can't dump those, those spoils there. I'm sure that every other community that's in our same situation feels the same way. Um, so I think that if we, we need to take an overall look of is there something that we can do with the sediment, turn it into a different product, perhaps we could create a revenue stream. Um, you know, I'm just thinking outside the box here, but clearly, we, we don't want to be in a position of saying, um, you know, no, absolutely not, we want to be part of the solution.
No, thank you, and I appreciate that, and you know, I've met with not only the Army Corps, but met with the Corps, uh, be calling, uh, Bob Summers over at MDE to talk about, you know, the issues involved with that placement of spoils. Uh, clearly, you know, courthouse is also in, in the mix and, and, uh, you know, the, the issues of that, that can be permitted. And what I stress with the Army Corps is that, first of all, they have to be open with the communities, they have to, they have to involve the communities and, and open to what's the solution. Uh, but you're right, in the end, the Army Corps has the land, in the end, they have the authority with, to put the spoils anywhere where they have, where they have land, which is Cecil County, you know, the, the two sites. Uh, they're, they're, it, it would be groundbreaking, some of the mitigation that they plan, uh, with regards to the liners and, and, uh, and the, and the walls that they build at the site are actually ones that, uh, it came as a surprise to me, haven't been used anywhere else on any other site in the country. And this is new engineering, first time it would be used, which is a good sign that the Army Corps actually is breaking from its pathways and just putting the stuff on the ground and, you know, let nature take care of what, what it's going to do, where they, where they're actually studying what happens, uh, to, to these placement sites doing things. Of course, the extensive geologic survey, they found a, the hole within the, um, the subterranean levels that was causing the contamination of the water. And then the last step now is, is for them, I think systematically, uh, to start, begin to discuss mitigation issues, because this is not going to be the only site where mitigation issue is going to come up, uh, in the United States with the Army Corps. But it is one of the first sites where, where this has come to a head relatively soon. And again, this is, they're, they're, uh, they're breaking kind of new ground on this. So, that, that's part of the reason, I believe, why it's taken a while for that to get resolved. Uh, that being said, you know, the, the dredging is, is a, is important. It is a, it's much cheaper to, to place, uh, up in the upper bay than to go to the, uh, eventually either, uh, Poplar Island or the mid, midbay islands when they're, when they're developed as placement sites. Uh, so if, 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 if we could make it work out with the local residents out in the county, obviously it could be win-win, and we just have to think about how to make it a win-win situation, uh, obviously paying attention to, to the effect of dredge foils on the, uh, subterranean aquifer versus well. So, I'm well aware of what's going on, and, you know, as I say, we're, we're being updated constantly by the Army Corps. Uh, we think the MDE shouldn't, and I, I haven't gotten updated in two weeks, but I don't think they've gotten a, a permit from MDE, is that right? No permits, right?
Right.
Uh, you know, that, that's a, that's a problem. I mean, the state has to, the state is one of the players in this, and they, they do have to make a decision. Uh, to not make a decision is to make, you know, they will for, they will force the Army Corps' hands at some point. And, uh, because again, the Army Corps does have the authority under federal statute to place those spoils, whether or not, you know, MDE says yes or no. I'd rather, I'd rather all the jurisdictions work together to come to the right solution. Uh, and again, I'll, I'll urge the MDE to, uh, to make up its mind and to, to, uh, on both sites as to what, what to do going forward in the future.
Mr. President, sorry, I didn't interrupt. Um, before I forget, I was speaking with Bill Haines, he's a leader in, uh, the community. Um, he asked that if the liner is used, that there would be a leak detection system. Um, there is no way to find out if that, uh, liner is effective, um, in containing the spoils. Um, and also, uh, he is requesting that you, as our Congressman, uh, be able to access the, uh, wealth, uh, the testing reports, um, wealth testing ninety-five to present. Um, apparently, they have not been able to get a hold of this information. Uh, we first need to find out what the overall real damage is to the, uh, to the aquifer and to their water system. And while they have the authority, the Army Corps of Engineers have the authority to dump the dredge foils there, they also have the responsibility to clean up their mess. And if they were a private, um, company, we would be doing remediation. Um, so, um, I understand that there is a great deal of increased traffic of tankers with the, um, Maryland, uh, report of Baltimore, uh, with the opening, reopening of the Pan Wall Canal. I'm sure they're very motivated to, uh, get that, uh, approval from MDE. But I'd say MDE has a huge responsibility to make sure that those dredge foils are contained. Um, when I asked them about the, uh, the amount of the sediment increasing due to the, uh, the lack of, uh, the Conalingo Dam controlling the, the runoff, they said that there's no more sediment today as there was in years past. So, that's the kind of information we're getting from the Army Corps of Engineers. We know that can be true.
Well, to that last point, uh, it is true. Until you reach the steady state and the dam fills up, over time, it is still being trapped. I mean, the, the Conalingo still functions as a trap. The trap just gets, oh, washed, washed out, so there is every once in a while...
Mr. McLeod, could you add to that?
Statute, and let me, let me just finish. On a statutory point, the Army Corps does not have the statutory responsibility for mitigation, and that's one of the issues here. They, I mean, the Army Corps really, and I mean, look, they, they sat in office and told me, and, you know, again, since we, my committee controls their appropriations, they're not, they know better than to come in and, and asleep me. Uh, they are, uh, not required under statute, and, but they're willing to do it, and that's a, that's a good sign. I mean, they, uh, uh, you know, as they explained to us, and, and, and the other, only last point I'll make is with regards to, to the wells, I mean, they will have, and I would, uh, I believe their plan calls for monitoring wells, so if, once they put a liner in, they would be able to monitor the aquifers. Uh, I have, by the way, urged them, uh, and they're going to have, they're going to come back and, and report back on, I, I personally don't think they should be, uh, they should be putting spoils on the southwest side of that placement site, which is where the hole in the aquifer is. Uh, and they, and I would urge them not to do it. I mean, that, that's, the, the site over where the, where the hole in the, uh, subterranean layers is, uh, they, one of their plans would continue to, would line it, but then bump over that site. I, I have concerns about that, and I'd rather, I'd rather wear belts and suspenders. I mean, I'd rather, not only there be a liner, but if there's slurry wall, that, or the wall that they construct, that, uh, would be a double layer of protection from the aquifer. Uh, but again, all that is, they're breaking, they're breaking new ground, they've just never had to do this anywhere, and, uh, you know, it'll, it'll take a while for them to figure out what to do. But we want transparency, as everyone else says, we want transparency. I mean, we're happy to ask them for, uh, water, uh, test results, uh, they'll be forthcoming with us.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Mr. McLeod, could you give us that?
Well, I think the issue about when the reservoirs reach that state of equilibrium, as the Congressman mentioned, there's a point in time when they will be so full that whatever comes down the Cecil Hannah just flows freely over. However, and we're, this is something the coalition's trying to prove and get people to understand, really, they'll never be full because of the scouring that occurs, especially during large storm events. And even by controlling the gates, you can control how much of the, the legacy sediments are grabbed when the volume of water coming down the Cecil Hannah increases. And it used to be, it took a substantial storm event to grab a lot of those legacy sediments and bring them over the dam, in addition to whatever else comes. The theory now is they're so full, more of that is happening, and in fact, the amount of sedimentation in the upper bay is greater than normal. Um, and, and it's the scouring that is the issue, because we've always had to deal with what comes down the Cecil Hannah. But more and more, grabbing what's already there, and in fact, we believe there's so much scouring, serious considerations should be given to this being a point source of pollution. I mean, you look at this picture of these, this water gushing, and then you think of all the wastewater treatment plants and their pipes and the, the ditches and the culverts, and then you can't look at this and think that is now becoming a point of pollution, not just what's coming naturally down the Cecil Hannah, but because of what it's grabbing that's sitting there. And then you got the whole issue, which we really haven't come into, is the quality of those sediments. I mean, the Pierce Creek issue gets into the quality of the sediments, what's in the sediments, what's in it, where can we safely dispose of it? When we talk about the Conalingo, we all, it's convenient to just talk about sediments, nitrogen phosphorus, there's a lot of other stuff there. So, it is a complicated issue, what you've got to do with it. But this idea of when will they be full, they'll never really be full because you keep adding capacity through large storm events. Um, but we've got to address that someday.
No, I understand that, and clearly, there, there could be industrial contaminants from the, uh, from, again, from, uh, southwest, uh, southern tier of, uh, New York as well as the northeast part of Pennsylvania. Uh, and you're right, obviously, the time averaging just goes down so that it'll take a large, uh, you know, a large, uh, thunderstorm to, to flush sediments, but, uh, but, uh, but we are, and again, you know, we're coming up to that point, and it's, it's on my radar screen.
Thank you, okay. Councilwoman Brumel would like to, uh, discuss, um, some issues that she's been working on a long time and concerns all of the Cecil County citizens regarding...
Excuse me, Mr. Hodge?
Yes?
May I be recognized about Pierce Creek issue?
No, we'll, we'll have some time afterwards to talk to Congressman Harris. Councilwoman Brumel, do you want to bring Congressman Harris up to speed on your comments?
The law enforcement officials estimate that eighty to ninety percent of crime in Cecil County is regulated... Uh, two thousand and eleven statistics from the state of Maryland show Cecil County has the second highest child abuse amount treatment, second highest opioid overdose rate, seventh highest amount of opioid addicts in treatment. Um, all of these, uh, statistics were from the state of Maryland Health Department, and instead, we have the second highest violent crime rate, uh, according to the Maryland Uniform Crime Statistics. Uh, the main drugs in order of use, alcohol, marijuana, prescription medication. I wanted to point out that the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention has classified prescription drug abuse as an epidemic. Drug-induced deaths have now outranked car accidents as the number one cause of accidental deaths in America. Um, number four is cocaine, number five is heroin. Uh, because of the prescription drug monitoring programs, um, it's becoming more difficult to get certain prescription pills, and many are turning to heroin. It's cheaper than the pills and more pure and addictive than what was manufactured before. Um, in order for Cecil County to effectively address their drug abuse issues, intervention is needed on the local, state, and federal level. Um, I, I remember Congressman Harris, uh, you held a town hall, and I asked you the question, um, what can you do to help us with our drug problem? And I can understand why you said it's a local issue, but I, I would just strongly encourage you to, to look for remedies to help us on the federal issue as well. And I know you said, um, uh, it was Obama, President Obama did have the Office of National Drug Control Policy, and, uh, this is one of their, uh, issues that they would like to target. And there are, uh, tools that we can use, um, to, uh, utilize in the local area. Uh, some of the initiatives on the local level, um, we have been learning, uh, were drug, are drug awareness forums and workshops to educate the public on the problem, prevention, and intervention. So far, we've held seven forums and workshops, and our next workshop is, um, well, I'm not sure if you were here, but it's going to be on community policing. Churches are now holding forums on their own. Marie Allen of the Heroin Hertz Program has presented her program in our middle and high school classes, and it's, it's a powerful program. It's, uh, getting the kids' attention, I really appreciate her work on that, she does it free of charge. Regularly scheduled drug takeback events allow the public to dispose of expired, unwanted, and unused prescription medications. Um, on the state level, the council has unanimously agreed to support changes in, on COAR, uh, requesting the state bring the opioid maintenance therapy counselor client ratio in line with other American Society of Addiction Medicine levels of treatment. The amount of client individual counseling sessions be increased from one contact in a month minimum to weekly contacts, and that treatment plan be reviewed on a monthly basis rather than every sixty days. Uh, the definition of negative urinalysis test should be consistent, I was shocked to hear this. Currently, opioid maintenance therapy, a negative urinalysis test means that a sample contained no opioids. However, it may contain other drugs and therefore is not a negative sample. Uh, continued drug use indicated by a positive urinalysis should be addressed on the treatment plan and in individual counseling sessions, not by simply raising the dose of methadone. Drugs that are being used to boost the effect of the methadone can be deadly. When using a combination, education on this needs to be part of the overall treatment process. What we're looking for is effective drug treatment programs, and we want a, um, I guess, an accountability of statistics to show how many people have been effectively, uh, counseled, uh, intervention, um, uh, for them to, to have positive treatment. On the, the federal level, we have applied for the HIDA, High Intensity Drug Trafficking Designation. Thomas Carr, Director of the Baltimore/Washington Region, directed the Cecil County Drug Task Force in applying for this designation, and retired Sergeant Gerald Widows completed the threat, threat assessment to officially apply. HIDA's primary goal, uh, is to disrupt the drug market by dismantling or disrupting drug trafficking organizations and provide support from other federal agencies fighting drug trafficking. Now, we have been told we are next in line to get this designation as a huge victory, but we are just waiting for confirmation on the funding, and this is the first request that, uh, if you could provide assistance on knowing where that funding is, um, I know with these, with sequestration and the climate, it's going to be a challenge, but I, I would say, given Cecil County's, um, statistics, we should be a priority. Another area of concern is the ability of doctors to obtain multiple licenses in different states. How are states sharing information when a doctor's license is suspended? We just had an issue with a doctor losing his license in Delaware, and the Maryland Board of Physicians was not very responsive in, uh, publishing that, uh, revocation of his license, very quick to remove an affiliation with a hospital, but not with the suspension. Uh, is the license to write prescriptions affected, especially if the doctor's suspension is related to an abuse of over-prescribing pain medication? From what I've been told, my daughter's a PA, and she said that the, um, the, the license to write prescriptions is with the DEA affiliated?
Yeah, both. You have a, DHMH issues a controlled dangerous substance license, uh, registration and the DEA.
So, maybe there's an opportunity for the federal government possibly to intervene when doctors have multiple licenses that they can, um, I guess, um, stop them from being... That's why we have Chip McLeod, because he speaks so wonderfully. Uh, let's see here. Whatever site is there for states that do not update suspensions on a timely basis on their Board of Physicians website? I think that's another opportunity. Prescription monitoring programs are only effective if surrounding states share the information, we know that. Can legislation be introduced to make access to surrounding states? PMP is a part of the national PMP requirements. And, uh, the group which spends the most amount of money lobbying Congress, I found this out last night, are the big pharmaceutical companies. Uh, uh, they were able to convince Congress in two thousand and six to include a prescription drug benefit for Medicare, and Congress helped recruit their demand that Medicare not be allowed to negotiate pricing with drug makers. So, it just shows me how powerful they are. Um, in your opinion, are the large pharmaceutical companies that have over-prescribed, over-marketed these drugs adequately punished to deter abuses? What legislation would you recommend as our, our Congressman with a medical background to effectively impact the prescription for abuse epidemic?
Well, thank you, no, that is clearly a problem, and it's a, it's a national issue. I just met with, uh, some folks at the DEA, uh, two weeks ago, and, uh, they're, they're very concerned, um, that it's going to get worse before it gets better, partly because of a changing societal attitude, or at least on the legislative level, which we saw here in the state toward marijuana. Uh, they really do view this as a... They really do view this as a serious issue, because marijuana is a gateway drug, and when the headlines talk about a medical use of marijuana, now all of a sudden you've taken something, and again, I've discussed this issue on the floor of the State Senate before I left the State Senate many times. You have a, what is the message that sends to a teenager? When they pick up the newspaper and it says, "We approve medical marijuana." It sends the message that there's something good about marijuana, because we actually think that society thinks there's something good about medicines. They think that'll undo decades of work that has been, starting in the eighties, you know, just say no to drugs programs that have, and with substantial results among teenage drug use, that the attitude towards drugs, including marijuana, has been increasingly negative over the past thirty years. And that now with states like Colorado and Washington, I believe was the other one, that are going toward legalizing marijuana, that'll undo many decades. So the bad news is, and I think this is all going to get worse before it gets better, now the DEA at the federal level, so again, the federal government unfortunately, and this is a frustration to the DEA, the Department of Justice has said they're not going to enforce federal laws, because, you know, when states pass a law that says, you know, marijuana is legal, that really, the federal government can say, well, actually, you're wrong because it falls under DEA classification. We preempt state law, therefore, we can prevent it from being legal in your state. It is not really legal. You can't tell the DEA what's legal and not legal in your state. Unfortunately, the Department of Justice is choosing not to enforce that law. That's an administration decision. I disagree with the administration decision, but that's an administration decision. So you're going to have a problem with truly legalized marijuana around the country despite the fact that federal law is still illegal under federal law. The third level, because you mentioned, you know, as you should look alcohol, marijuana, prescription drug, cocaine, heroin. Obviously, cocaine and heroin is a longstanding war that's being fought. Interestingly, most people don't realize that it is, that terrorism and terrorism-linked groups have become some of the largest traffickers around the world. That is how they get their money for their activities. And the DEA is stepping up its activities with narco-terrorism. I mean, it has a name, it's called narco-terrorism, and it is the linkage in many countries around the world, especially the Middle East and Pakistan, Afghanistan, of terror, known terrorist groups to narcotic trafficking. So with regards, and that's mostly heroin, it's mostly heroin, some cocaine out from South America, some of the terrorist groups in South America as well. The prescription drugs is where the federal government through the DEA can probably have its largest effect, because they are prescription drugs. They are, in fact, all of these drugs are listed on DEA classification, they all fall under jurisdiction of the DEA. And the question is how to do it. You know, and I know I met with one of the local pharmacy owners here, you know, a kind of clumsy way is they say, well, you know, some certain pharmacy prescribed, you know, is dispensing too much of it. Well, you know, a pharmacy is only kind of a passive conduit. I mean, you know, a patient brings in a prescription, you kind of want your pharmacy to fill your prescription, without the DEA saying, well, you know, this narcotics, but there are other drugs. You wouldn't want the federal government to say, well, you know, we think you're dispensing too much of some certain expensive drugs, so we're just not going to let your pharmacy dispense it. I mean, you can take that, that level of interference beyond where it should be. So the first clumsy efforts is, well, you know, some pharmacies are dispensing too much, and we're just going to, you know, coerce the distributors into not sending more of those drugs, or enough drugs to those pharmacies to fill the prescriptions. That's pretty clumsy, because it treats the, it treats the person who legitimately has the need for that drug the exact same way as the person who has an illegitimate need for that drug. You know what I mean? Because the patient, the patient who actually needs the drug suffers because that pharmacy won't be given, won't be given a supply necessary to provide for patients who have the need. So probably the best systems are the PMP systems. Unfortunately, they're all at the state level, and, you know, again, when you have the federal state interaction on health licensing issues and license-related issues, it becomes a sticking point, because traditionally, licensing and actions related to licensing, which really what PMPs do, I mean, ultimately, the hammer is, is that if you're discovered to fall outside the norms of prescribing, you know, a license action can be taken. But these license actions are all necessarily state actions, because there is no federal licensure at the provider level. The question is how you, how the DEA, and it was, and I'm glad you recommended this because I will contact them and ask them about what their thoughts are about becoming a clearinghouse of information, of PMP information. That would be an appropriate federal role, for federal governments to work with the states that have PMP programs, to make sure that data is widely shared. But in the end, and I'm not sure how the federal government would intervene, given that they don't have licensing authority. You know, the DEA, again, to hearken back how they've done it now...